Good afternoon, I'd like to welcome everyone to our council meeting of August 27th. I'd like to officially call the meeting to order at 1:00 PM. Please note that councillor Walsh has sent his regrets and will be on able to attend today's meeting. To start, we'll begin with our land acknowledgement and a moment of silent reflection. I will now ask members to declare any good area just before council. Seeing no hands, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. May I get a motion for today's agenda is circulated or amended moved by councillor Hodges.
Circulated.
As circulated. And second by deputy mayor Burton. All in favor? Motion's carried. Moving along, approval of the prior minutes, meeting minutes, I'm looking for a motion to adopt the regular meeting minutes of July 23rd as presented or amended. Councillor War.
Through you as presented.
As presented, seconder. Deputy Mayor Burton. All in favor? Motion's carried. Business arising from the minutes, do we have any business arising from the minutes? Deputy Mayor Burton.
Thank you through you mayor, I just had one quick question. From the minutes are a the boys and girls. I just wondered if there was any feedback regarding their rental fees and their interest for applying for a donation as per policy. There wasn't a donation listed, so I just didn't know if they there was any interest.
So through your mayor, I haven't received anything unless. Thank you for letting us know or okay.
Yeah, I just wondered if there's any feedback, so okay, thank you.
Anything else councillors? Onto the consent agenda. We have correspondence items C1 through C4, staff report R1 and the cultural inheritance committee many committee minutes of July 22nd. Do we have somebody to approve as circulated or amended? Deputy Mayor Burton? As circulated, second. Councillor War. Any questions? All in favor? Motion's carried. Delegation, we had no delegations or presentations today, so we'll move on to staff reports and I'd like to welcome everybody back. To the team, especially Mr Walden, manager of public works and environmental services.
Great, thank you mayor council, it's great to be back. Said that, Mel will be right up front. Anyways, our first report with the Ontario regulation 40619, which I think has been amended, but you'll see it as a version 555. 21, I think as well, the excess soil regulation, it's kind of the Coles notes on it, it's a it's a huge regulation and I won't read the report. Line by line, so it's a. Kind of how it will impact us is you'll start to see it in capital projects as a probably a line in a tender. How they're going to have to deal with excess soil if it has to leave the site. The key is what the ministry really wants to do is to try to. Get generators to really reuse their soils on site as much as they can and and make sure that it's not, it is a. It is more of a kind of a a large area, more of a GTA. I think that is driving this, not so much as around here, but it will impact us on large street reconstructions. Some of the points for us as far as our operations ditching. Organics and top soils are exempt, so probably eighty-five percent of the material that we are generating is is top soils. And organic, so that's that's exempt from the reg. Other things that is a hundred cubic meters is also exempt, anything over a hundred cubes. Then you have to follow the regulation a little more strictly. Which starts with kind of sampling your area and making sure that it's compliant before the fill moves. If it's non-compliant, it's more of a landfill material and that's where the the biggest impacts for costing is going to hit us. I think as an example in 2019, when it did first come to light with the old reg, Durodummer actually went through the process just to. To try to see how it works and they did some sampling and actually their material did fail, it did have enough solvent that it didn't fail. So that's some of the contaminants that they're looking for, it's not just, a lot of people go right to fuel. It's not just fuel, it could be, it could be sodiums or fluorides or anything. Anyways, I did double a little bit on on some of the sites, the class one is more of a storage site. So a property where the the fill is kind of short term. It can land there as long as it's going to be reused, it can land there and be stored called mobile bank storage in the reg. A class two soil management site is just a bigger scope, it's a it's a short term spot for still storage. You can have multiple jobs, so as long as the gold piles are isolated and regulated. And of course, what comes along with this is the documentation, have to track the fill. From site to site until it's final resting place and that's what the MLE will ask for. In the event enforcement is called, they'll ask for your sampling and your manifest. To see where the fill was generated from and and how how much it's moved around. I did implement the regulation in my past life two years ago. Just some fill that was showing up from the city. And it was, it was a good way to watch the MLE and how it works and they are very patient with. The individuals, like all they want to see is the documentation, the process is being followed. So again, I'm happy to answer any questions at the reg, I know it's a monster and like I said, I tried to pick out the key points out of the reg, so.
Just one comment, a big thing about this would be gas station sites, salt dome sites. Anything else you can think of in our township?
Through you mayor, no, you've hit the big ones, salt contamination of course is, like you said, we touched on this key. I'm not so much, I guess agriculture you would have to be careful with thinking that, you know, we are a huge agricultural basin, just making sure that. Anything that's on a farm isn't leaching away or whatnot, so I think I think that may be a point that that could cause something.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Burton.
Thank you through you mayor, just a quick question, is the landfill benchmark, is it an approved landfill site for some of this contaminated field, I believe it is?
Yep, through you mayor, absolutely, that would be our our local site for and they will use it for daily cover. There is some, I think, one of the local construction guys, they have a site on. By Donwood. There's a, they're telling me about the contaminated site and and a lot of that stuff from back trucks, so the back trucks are dumping there from catch basins and whatnot and then they're air raiding it, so. They make it usable again, they they just keep turning it and flipping it and and re-sampling, so there is processes to clean the fill, but. The key is to to reuse it and even even in in our operations such as us. We're seeing more. Logistically to if if we can use it to fill in, like if we're ditching and we, there's a big spot that's four meters deep and we can lose a few loads there and build a slope. It's it's safer and better anyways, so it is, it's just making us. Any generator, not just us, any generator toe the line a little bit with what they probably should be doing.
Thank you, any councillor War.
Thank you through you mayor, I did reach out earlier, you did answer a couple of questions, but I was wondering, so the brownfields that you hear about, they're. More of a GTA or places that were heavily industrialized, like you're looking at, you know, former. Former sites that may have been used for industry and really we, you know, other than what you had listed before, like gas stations and that. We really don't have any of those huge places that would have been now classified as a brownfield, right?
Through you mayor, that's correct, yeah, I would feel safe, I think onsite, I think the the old Stewart lot or circle K, I mean, they they still monitor that. And of course, the the. It's not migrating anymore because the source is gone, so it shouldn't get any worse than what they picked up on and I remember, I remember when they did that excavation, it was massive. And there is actually a concrete retaining wall buried along highway seven and the property line, so it can't migrate and not retaining wall, it's it's deep, it's it's a DP wall, so. We've discovered that on some water surfaces. But but I think that's only property that's really local that would.
Even be classified.
Yeah, but then they are monitoring.
Yeah, thank you Jeff.
Any other questions? Thank you Jeff, councillor man, I would most you to accept this report regarding old reg 406-19 excess soils for information. Councillor Hodges, councillor War. All in favor? My motion's carried. Jeff, you still have the floor.
Great, thank you mayor, and again with the transportation deposit program, just to try to tidy up how we handle our empties. I guess we'll go back in the beginning with 2008. The the Christmas families program was started kind of internally with municipal staff and was driven from that. And then, you know, along the way, we started collecting the empties to try to pull some stuff out of the the recycling streams as a diversion tactic. And less handling, less logistics and 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 kind of did it internally. Just to try to stay neutral and with all of our user groups, we decided that the Christmas families was probably the best, the best way and had the biggest impact for the money that we would collect. As opposed to, as an example, say the skating club or like the minor hockey or something like that, I know there was interest in that, but we. We just thought it would be a good way to to stay neutral, but still have a have a big impact on our community. So yeah, just a little bit of a policy just to try to tidy up on how we how we handle those funds and and where they go to, so. Again, I'm happy to answer any questions on how we handle that.
Thank you Jeff, it goes right back to the community, which is a good thing. Any further questions to do? Okay, thank you Jeff, council state the recommended motion that the council of the township of Assedale Norwood accepts this report for information. And further that the council adopts distribute dispersment of funds policy. The Assedale Norwood transfers transfer station deposit return program is presented. Councillor Alex Greaves and Deputy Mayor Burton. Thank you very much, James.
Thank you.
Everybody in favor of that? The two that made it, it should have had a go, thank you. Moving on to our four, Seamus. Request for tender.
Thank you through your mayor. So this report is a request for tender to replace the monument roof, that's just above this room, not above the base surface. So a recommendation that the council of the township of Assedale Norwood receives this report regarding the request for tender results for the monument roof replacement for information. And further that the council of the township of Assedale Norwood awards RFT 202403. To ICI Roofing Limited for completion of the product with an EPDM membrane. So on Friday, August 9th, just after noon, staff opened tenders, we received three of them. From On Time Roofing, Northern Exposure Repairs and ICI Roofing Limited, two of the three previously pit on the Norwood library roof. So upon reviewing all three, all of them met the criteria. So now I'll go over the chart, so staff, when we posted it, we asked for two types, so just to kind of explain it. Because when we were doing this, this was a learning brawl staff. DPO and EPDM is like barks root beer and mug root beer, it's not like pop. So it's the same type of membrane, just two different kinds, so it's not like shingles and steel. So they're both the same type, so we had to price it out both after consulting with the building department, they were very helpful in this. So I'll just review them, so TPO membrane, ICI came in with all three of them, what sixty millimeter membrane thickness. ICI had a twenty year warranty, their subtotal was ninety-six thousand for a total of a hundred and eight, four hundred and eight eighty. Northern Exposure Repair. Was a five year warranty, their subtotal was a hundred and one thousand nine hundred and sixty fifty for a total of. Hundred and fifteen thousand two fifty and thirty-seven. An on time roofing came in with a ten year warranty. Their subtotal was a hundred and four seven fifty for a total of a hundred and eighteen, three sixty-seven fifty. And then switching to the EPDM membrane, they had the same manufacturer warranty on both products, so ICI was a subtotal of. Hundred and three two hundred. For a total of a hundred and sixteen thousand six sixteen. Northern Exposure Repair was a subtotal of a hundred and four thousand six forty-three ninety for a total of. Hundred and eighteen thousand two forty-seven sixty-one. And on time roofing was subtotal a hundred and five thousand for a total of a hundred and eighteen thousand six fifty. So after reviewing the quotes, we could see ICI was not only the quote that came in the lowest, but also they had the highest manufacturer warranty. So after reviewing for both TPO and EPDM and after talking with the building department staff, would like to proceed with the EPDM membrane for the fuller reasons. So compatibility, previously it's just over a year old, the finish on a roof is EPDM. So by keeping it the same, when hopefully none of us are still around when the time. Needs to be replaced again, it's the same type of roof and it's only a year old. So it's not. Half of its shingles, half of its metal, by the time comes, one wears out before the other. Longevity, so EPDM is known for its durability and has a longer lifespan versus TPO is a relatively newer kid on the block that maybe. Maybe it it has pros, maybe it has cons, but because it's relatively new, doesn't have as much of a track record as EPDM. And the durability of EPDM is better and the TPO membrane tends to easily puncture puncture, so. Pretty much on the roof, the only people who are going up there is for servicing or staff and they have to go up and change the filters in the units. No one else should be up there, obviously. In the past, due to the roof leaking, we've had to go up and kind of shovel it off, which that could kind of tend to not be good for the roof too, but once we get this replaced. We won't have to do that, so again, the only ones going up there are if it's a machine getting serviced or staff going up to change the filters. So these factors make EPDM the preferred choice, so the timeline of this project. The tender stated the completion will be by October 30th, once council makes a decision, staff will reach out to ICI. And let them know, obviously, we'll make sure that because they're not taking off the roof, they're just building over it, it won't. It shouldn't interfere with anything going on here. If it is still going on around fair weekend, we'll make sure that they're obviously done and not here over fair weekends, similar to last year when they, or two years ago when they were building the fitness center. The Thursday leading in the fair weekend, they were not allowed to be on site. So. The financial implications, the 2024 rec budget, budget of a hundred and eight thousand for this replacement. This portion of the budget will be satisfactory to cover the costs. So total project cost including the one point seven six non-recoverable tax is a hundred and five thousand sixteen dollars and thirty-two cents. We engage building department, executive assistant treasurer, CAO, deputy clerk, deputy treasurer on this report. And the conclusion, staff recommend awarding this project to ICI Roofing Limited to install EPDM roofing membrane.
Thank you Seamus. Before I get to motion, does anybody have any questions with Seamus, councillor War?
Thank you, through you mayor, just one comment, it was nice to see three quotes come in, it was also nice to see them all close. In the amount that it was tendered and that's just a comment, it's it's nice to see not so big a fluctuation in what people are quoting, so I would make the motion.
Okay, and the motion is that the council of township of Assedale Norwood receives this report for information and further that the council awards. RFT 2024 dash oh three to ICI Roofing Limited. For completion of the project with the EPDM membrane. Councillor War moved, deputy mayor Burton second. All in favor? Motion's carried.
Thank you.
Jordan.
Treasure, you have the floor. Thank you through you mayor, R5 is the 2024 second quarter financial variance. The recommendation is the council of the township of Assedale Norwood receives this report regarding. The 2024 second quarter financial variance for information purposes. Quarterly, I provide a report to council with a summary detailing. How we're operating compared to the municipal budget. Obviously, the second quarter takes us till the end of June 2020, 2024. And provides us with a snapshot of our current financial position. So we are in a sustainable position. If you had a chance to look at the department breakdowns. There's a couple of things to note, one of them is most of the capital spending will occur in Q3 and Q4. Invoices typically come in in Q4 for some of our construction projects, which is a little difficult at the moment to get a clear picture on our capital. I would look for the year, in my meetings with management, it looks like we will be on schedule. To complete. The majority of projects, I haven't been notified of anything yet that states we won't be finished in 2024. We're only halfway through the year and that could change, look for updates in the Q3 report. The first quarter and second quarter also includes expenses that are front-ended. Including insurance and memberships, so typically we pay for these a hundred percent upfront. Which can sway some of the numbers and the percentage of variance. And also to note, the budget and reserve transfers. For each of the departments, so funds were transferring from reserves to pay for stuff or to reserves additional revenue or. Surplus that we have at the end of the year will occur in Q4, so that sometimes throws off the the values. If you look at the department breakdowns. Again, similar to Q1, the new medical center costs. Are quite high, but everyone's aware of them and it's it's expected. The financial implications are a couple of things to maybe keep an eye out for, besides the medical center. Is revenue from development, so there's significant revenue tied to development in the 2024 budget. Right now. We're anticipating Q4 to see some of that development, the 2023 budget saw significant revenue from development as well. Fortunately, we didn't see the development in 2023. And there was an impact. We'll get to that with my next report, so. Again, we're in a sustainable position. With some of the staffing turnover. That we've had, there has been some challenges, but we're trying to try our best to kind of highlight those and bring them forward. And if you have any questions at this time, I'm going to take them.
Any questions, Jordan? Deputy Mayor Burton.
Thank you through you mayor, really just a comment, thank you treasure, I I appreciate the the. Transparency of this and the the notes are very handy as well, as we go through each department, it's nice to see, you know, why is that at a hundred and ten percent and then why is this a twenty percent? That makes sense with the front ending. So when you said one of the, not really concerns, but something to watch is the revenue for development Q4. And I know, you know, things weren't great there last year and we're kind of waiting to the end of the end of it this year and I guess. I guess that goes into your next report is kind of the the importance of perhaps sitting tight, waiting, but. From the perspective of the management team, is it looking fairly reasonable that there will be some substantial development come Q4? Or do you think that will be, you know, kind of a two-year overlay in the 2025?
So. At the. End of Q2 in my meetings, I was provided information that you're. Anticipating Q4, do you have anything like that?
I think these two might have been there. We don't have any control. The develop, it's not, staff, it's something back to happen sooner. The developers are going to. Set their own timelines and we work with them, but we can't. Us trying to watch them or trying to make them look.
And you don't want to do that.
And we don't, it needs to be, they need to be comfortable with it, so I'm not faulting them for that, but it is one of those ones where. I expect we're going to get some amount in Q4. I would not want to speculate on just how much it's going to be at this point, because like I said, it is completely outside of our control. I will say. We are going to get all of that development money at some point in time, it will come in as the development goes on. But yet we don't, we we don't control that time.
You don't have a crystal ball.
I was just going to say the same thing, these two gentlemen don't have a crystal ball.
We we had one, but I dropped it.
Any other questions of Jordan? All right, thank you Jordan, councillor, may I get a motion to accept this report regarding the 2024 second quarter quarter financial variance for information. Moved by councillor Hodges. Second by councillor War, all in favor, that motion's carried. Jordan, do you want to continue on with our six, 2025 operating capital budget schedule?
Sure, through you mayor. This report is the 2025 operating capital budget schedule. The recommendation is that the council of the township of Assedale Norwood accepts this report regarding the 2025 operating capital budget schedule for information. And further that council of the township of Assedale Norwood confirms the approach to take for the 2025 operating. And capital budget schedule. Essentially, we're presenting two budget schedules to consider for 2025. One is an early budget adoption, think similar to what you've experienced in past years. For that timeline, we'd be looking at special. Draft budget meetings in mid-November and late November. With a final draft in December and then a public meeting and final adoption of 2025. Municipal operating capital budgets in early January 2025. Again, I think this is consistent with what's been done in the township in the past, we're also proposing a later budget adoption. I guess for the reason of some of the turnover and uncertainty we've had here in the township. It potentially allows us an opportunity to restart, I guess you could say, or or maybe get back on track from a budget perspective, with you have the medical center. Would you have the development questions that we just discussed, so we're proposing. As another option, starting a little bit later, so our special department draft meetings would occur in February with a late February final draft. And then a public meeting. Early March. For the final adoption, there are some benefits to both sides. And some financial implications, so. An early budget approval would provide staff with twelve months to meet their budget goals and allows more time for procurement and capital project funding, so if you look at. You know, Parks and Rec manager, I'm sure they would love to have full twelve months to know what their budget is and do their best to meet meet the goals. Meet the procurement timelines, the capital expectations, that kind of thing. The other thing to note with an early budget approval is that we're basing the full year 2024 forecast off of, or sorry, the 2024 actuals off of a forecast. Usually after the third quarter. So essentially, a guess of what's going to hit in the last three months, you've done it before here. I'm sure comfortable with doing it. So I don't think there's any big concerns on my end from that, if we were to adopt a later budget. The benefits would be that we would know the full year actuals, so we would know what hits in 2024, we'd know where every department stands. There wouldn't be outstanding, and which is coming in late, there wouldn't be stuff that we potentially. Expected to hit in 2024 that we didn't have hit and which could impact the 2025. Budget, obviously. The negative side to that is less time for staff, as I mentioned, if you're Parks and Rec manager and you have roofing timelines or different timelines to meet from a capital perspective or other project perspective, it gives you a little. Less time if we're not. less time if we're not approving until late in uh in Q one. You have any questions? I'm happy to take questions of Jordan. Uh, Deputy Mayor Bird.
Uh, thank you, Treasure Mayor. Thank you, Jordan. Um, yeah, I I did reach out to our treasurer yesterday and certainly I I think everybody around this table and council tables, they do like to see that budget go out the door early in the year than staff can take it, get get running. I do truly believe that because of the huge turnover and people sitting in this room, I think they need the time to take these numbers and come in at the end of the year and make this budget their own. And I think it's it's good to take a breath and it's good to step back and and let's see what we have. So I really have no issues with going with a later one. I wouldn't want to see that every year. Um, certainly next year, you know, um, to to take a look at that. And then come twenty twenty six, maybe we can bump it up or maybe even at least by twenty twenty seven, we can get that budget done by the year end. Um, but I think there's just been so much changeover. I I think staff managers need that time. Not all staff are gonna love it. I I get it. I get it. But that's just, that's just my opinion. And um, I'll leave the floor for whoever else.
Uh, Counselor Hodge Grease.
I support with Deputy Member saying I also reached out to the treasurer this morning to just speak to him about it. And just because of so much uncertainty and everyone's finding out um, the new head of public works back in and everyone just sort of to make their budgets their own, I think actual numbers would be would be helpful. And I, and then I do think it'd be nicer to move back to the early adoption next year, but for this year I would support if if the treasurer feels comfortable providing the the later adoption date, I would be supporting.
Any other questions?
Um, through you, Mayor, just to echo what both of them said. I had reached out to the treasurer as well. And as long as this later um, budget adoption supports staff to meet township objectives and, you know, if this helps you and your team, then I'm for it. And I think, you know, you're putting it forward for a reason. I am, I'm in agreement that um, the early adoption in the past, but there has been staff turnover for sure. And this gives everyone a full year to see what's going on in their departments. And I I fully support like the later adoption.
And I do also, I never reached out to you about it, but I looked at it and I thought, yeah, it sounds really good because we have some numbers that we do not know exactly. And uh far be it from uh being wrong, it's a lot better to have the actuals.
And through you, Mayor, sorry, just quickly. Um, just to reiterate, this isn't something we're going to look at year over year as being late. Um, as well, any early uh or any departments requiring funds early in the year, we will bring a report to council for kind of a pre-budget approval, I mentioned to you, Counselor War, uh, similar to the the fire department's bumper truck, that type of thing, to ensure that we're keeping everything on schedule and we can, we can be, be heard.
Well, thank you, Jordan. Uh, counsel, if somebody would like to put forward a motion confirming the approach for twenty twenty five operating capital budget schedule. Uh, Deputy Mayor Bird.
For a late budget.
For a late budget, okay, I agree. Um, and Counselor Hodge Greaves, all in favor? Thank you, Jordan. Now we will move on to our seven, Ed Whitmore, Chief Building Official. Planning Coordinator, our seven consent application B dash five nine two four for Crowley, Ed.
Thank you, through you, Mayor. Staff received the consent application B fifty nine dash twenty four from Peterborough County Land Division. The county requires us to submit a municipal appraisal form to either recommend or not recommend this application. The application was submitted to the county by Jamie Robinson of M H B C Planning on behalf of Mr. Crowley. Consent application is applicable to the lands described as twenty one eighty seven County Road forty five, just south of Norwood. Um, concession nine part lot fifteen. The purpose of the application is to allow the severance of a parcel of land having frontage on County Road forty five of approximately seventy one meters and an area of approximately one point three six hectares. Plus or minus, it's a little over three acres in size. It's a beautiful rural residential lot. The effect of the application will create a new residential lot that surplus to the farming operations. So in order for it to be a surplus lot to farming uh farm consolidation as defined in the provincial policy statement is the acquisition of additional farm parcels to be operated as one farm. Uh, the consent application advises that the severance is an agricultural severance to dispose of the residents. A lot of farming operations, they don't want to be landlords. So this is typical. Uh, this appears to comply with the farm consolidation definition in the provincial policy statement and our official plan, county official plan. The county planning department completed a preliminary severance review. And the review indicated that the consent appears to conform to the provincial policies, but does not conform with the county official plan policies or the township official plan policies due to the separation for the entrance on the county road. And uh, they could not grant the uh severance due to that. And then the review indicated that no studies were required to support that application. Uh. The proponent discussed with the county roads department in order to resolve that issue to have the uh uh combined entrance so that their retained parcel would use the same entrance as what's existing. And so they agreed that that having no new entrances would comply with the official plan uh policies. The proponent, they hired M H B C Planning to complete uh the consent and the zoning bylaw and a planning justification report. And in that uh report, they were, they uh talked about how to obtain safe road access with the public works department. Met everybody, everybody was happy at the end of the day. And uh, the justification report states that access to the severed lands would be obtained by the uh uh, the adjacent lands is a shared entrance. So in order to protect farmland, comply with the official plan, provincial policy statement, the townships will require, if the severance is passed, that the retained lands be rezoned to prohibit residential uses and the recognize the undersized lot area of about fifteen hectares plus or minus. The severed lands do not comply with the township zoning bylaw requirements. So they'll be required to be rezoned to a rural residential exception zone. And that exception zone would allow the hobby farm since it's a little over three and a three acres, almost three and a half acres. We have not received any negative correspondence from any neighboring properties. Uh, in relation to the strategic plan, uh prosperity and growing our community, growing our economy. Uh, the engagement is with the uh community and municipal staff. The severance application would have been posted on site and would have been posted on the county of Peterborough Planning Department and on our own township website. Staff uh completed a municipal appraisal form for council's consideration. And we recommend the consent application. When you uh look at the planning justification report, uh, the recommendations at the very end of it, there they conclude that it's consistent with the provincial policy statement, conforms to the growth plan, conforms to the county official plan. Subject to approval of the zoning bylaw amendment, it would comply with the township zoning bylaw and it represents proper and orderly development and is good planning. And I'm in agreeance with all of that as well. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions, uh, Chief Building Physician? No?
I go ahead. Uh, through you, Mayor. Um. The, will the driveway be required to be moved? Because it said, I'm getting, so in one thing it says because the retained land doesn't, it can't have a separate entrance off of County Road. But then in the diagram, the driveway with the residential unit is entirely in the severed land spot, but they're talking about access to the parcel of land. So will they move the driveway or will access to the farmland be from the adjacent property?
I think it'll be from the existing adjacent property.
Okay.
So more than likely, they will register it on title uh that it has a an easement to allow them to use that driveway so that if they sell it to you or I or whoever, then they would still have access over that property. And there's also access from the uh neighboring owner's property to uh access the property like the, through the the farm fields.
And just one, and the the resident, sorry, the agricultural land, is it going to be merged to the adjacent property? So will, because it's all owned by the Crowley family, is it going to be one of the parcels or it's going to be retained?
Through you, Mayor. It it will be retained as a separate parcel. Uh. It's been done both ways in the past. So in the past, they have not merged the properties. And then they went into a while where they did merge the properties. But then the property ended up being not suitable to grow when a farmer bought a another property and it wasn't suitable to grow the crop and produce the amount of bushels or whatever it is per acre that they wanted it to produce. Then they would have to go through a severance to sever that off to sell it because it wasn't good enough for their farm practice. So since then, we've been not requiring them to be merged on title and the county official plan or the provincial policy statement doesn't require them to be merged on title. And some of them speaking in the past, they would have uh properties, say in Trent Hills, and they would merge them to our properties up here in Asphodel. And that would just became a real nuisance. Because uh, again, if it didn't produce the crops that, like they would tweak the soil and and add nutrients to it or whatever they had to do to try to make it uh a cash, a good providing cash crop. And then if it didn't work out for them, they'd have to go through this huge process.
So, so and this land is going to be rezoned, the retained lands, but it's going to be rezoned to rural residential, but no housing is allowed on. Is that correct?
No, through you, Mayor. So the severed parcel will be rezoned to rural residential exception zone to allow a hobby farm on it. The retained lands will be rezoned uh rural exception, whatever it is right now to uh recognize that it's fifteen hectares, hectares and to prohibit residential uses. So the way that we protect our farmland when when they do farm consolidation is we prohibit residential uses. So they don't build another house and do another severance and build another house and do another severance.
And the retained, the severed land, you could put cows on there?
The which?
The small, like the house, the property that's being severed. It's be ta- retained as a hobby farm. Would it allow livestock?
In a very limited number, like it may be one.
Okay.
So you'd have to uh more likely they would have a possibly a pony, possibly uh chickens, possibly some fowl like ducks or whatever, or possibly a pig, you know, or something like that. And we want them to be able to do that because it's a nice enough little piece of land. But they have to be able to take care of the nutrient, like the uh manure.
Yeah.
And so you have to have enough land or have a lease with some other farmer that you can take your manure, put it on their property.
Okay. Thank you for answering all my questions.
You're welcome.
Counselor War.
Uh, thank you, Treasure Mayor. Uh, but you know, it would be uh I D L property to have like a small market garden and mix some of that. But that is a perfect example of a hobby farm.
Like a garlic farm or something or.
Exactly, mushrooms or whatever. Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you, Ed.
Thank you, Ed. Any further questions, Red? Okay, counsel, um, state the recommended motion that the council of the township of Aspel Norwood accepts this report for information and further that the council recommends the consent application B dash fifty nine twenty four Crowley and further that the council directs staff to submit a municipal appraisal form to the Peterborough County Land Division. Counselor War.
Um, can I get a reported vote, please?
Yes, you can.
And yes.
You move. Secondary Deputy Member. All in favor, or hold it, reported vote, sorry.
Counselor War, yes. Mayor Goldford.
Yes.
Deputy Member, yes. Counselor Hodge Grease, yes. Motion is carried.
Okay. Ed, would you like to move along with our eight, the merger agreement?
Yes. Through you, Mayor. This merger agreement is from an old severance back in twenty twenty two. But we've been trying to uh get done. Get, get it completed. It's been like pulling teeth. But uh, we we're finally there. Uh, the severance application B dash fifty three dash twenty two was submitted to the county of Peterborough by Kevin English on behalf of uh Doug Edgerton and Kelly McLaughlin, McLaughlin. Not sure how to pronounce her last name. The purpose of the consent application is to create a lot addition severing a piece of land having frontage of approximately a hundred twenty nine meters and an area of approximately uh one hectare. Council of the township of Aspel Norwood recommended approval of this consent application back in May of twenty twenty two. The county of Peterborough Land Division, they approved the consent in October of twenty twenty two, subject to the rezoning of the severed parcel and entering into a merger agreement to the satisfaction of the township August. Uh. We completed the uh rezoning of the severed parcel here at the township and August the second of twenty twenty four, we finally received the merger agreement which uh is attached to the report and there's no financial implications. It's achieving operational excellence for sustainability, the zoning amendment. Had a public meeting uh for the engagement. People were circulated, agencies were circulated and uh was on our website. So this has been ongoing since twenty twenty two. And the conclusion is that the merger agreement uh will merge the two parcels of land and they'll be considered as one and it'll be registered on title. And hopefully the uh their lawyer will take care of this right away because the uh I think the deadline probably is October thirteenth of twenty twenty four. And so it's it's pushing the eleventh hour, even though it doesn't seem like it is, but it really is. And so that's it. There's any questions?
Any questions, counselors? Okay, I'll read the recommended motion. The township of Aspel Norwood accepts this report for information and further that the council authorizes the mayor and clerk to execute a merger agreement between Douglas Edgerton and Kelly McLaughlin to and Kevin and Julie English and the corporation of the township of Aspel Norwood. Move, Deputy Mayor Bird. Secondary Counselor Hodge Greaves. All in favor, motion is carried. Thank you very much, Ed.
You're welcome there.
Moving along to our nine, the procedure bylaw update. Our nine procedure bylaw update, I'll ask the clerk to proceed, but beforehand, I'm gonna say very good report now. Your very first procedure bylaw, a lot of work.
As council knows, the procedural bylaw is about to back up against us in our meetings here. Some time to time, it does require athletes to ensure that we're compliant and that it's reflective of the weekly business. So I want to start by saying that the overall theme of the changes in this proposed bylaw are housekeeping in nature. Uh, given our preference to meet in person and be mindful of our current staffing components, it seemed an opportune time to update our procedures, refine some things and kind of tidy it up a little bit. So I know you've had a chance during the whole bylaw in your agenda package, so I won't read through. So I know you've had a chance during the full bylaw in your agenda package, so I won't read through the entire thing, but I'll just touch on a few key updates. So articles one, two, and three, we added some language in the definition section, added some language in the general provisions to address some minor errors. And also expanded on the duty section. So right now, the bylaw only speaks to the head of council and now it speaks to all participating members. Article four is where we probably see the biggest change. So currently, our bylaw states that on the month's early meeting twice, the first meeting of that month is held electronically. It's a dedicated soon meeting. And that's been removed in the proposed bylaw. Again, given our preference to meet in person, which by the way, is not just in this room, it's across the board. People want to be in person again. Certainly in trainings and seminars and meetings I'm a part of, there's just a desire to be back in the, the room. And we're also being mindful of rural internet struggles, which are very much a pain point. So that's why that provision was removed. But that's not to say that hybrid participation was removed. That's still very much there. People can remote, remotely participate if they choose. That's there. And we also added some language around council receiving a schedule of meetings for that coming year, final November period. That's something that's, I think, already been in practice, but just has some language around that now. And we also had some language to address technology failures. So should the internet fail us, should our owls be grumpy? We have some language around that now as well. Um, in article eight, closed meetings, the way our bylaw currently reads, council wouldn't be receiving their closed session agenda material until after two P M. on the Monday before council meeting. And that's just not how we do things. So that's an updated to be reflective of when you get your agenda package, which is as soon as possible. And I would like to think before that topic. Article ten, quorum, we consolidated some provisions in the bylaw for ease of reading, so it's in one spot. Article twelve, we remove the C A O clerk treasure list for the order of business, obvious reasons. Article thirteen, here we extended the deadline for receipt of information for inclusion on the agenda. So currently, the bylaw states that materials have to be received in a first department by noon six days prior. And as far as I've been here, that's never been a forestore, um, taken into account. So that's been moved to end of day on Wednesday, which again, aligns with our current practice and gives people a little more time to have the materials included. And then we also added some language for the land acknowledgement. So as we saw earlier, we can honor the lands on which we gather in a video format or verbally, as we've done in the past, whichever their setting officer is most comfortable with. Article fourteen, we expanded on the guidelines for acceptance and handling correspondence. Article fifteen, again, for consistency, we've extended the deadline for delegation requests. So again, they have until four thirty P M. their end of business on the Wednesday to submit a request to seek to cancel. And we also allow the head of council the ability to extend that timeline. So right now, delegation has ten minutes to address cancel. And should they need longer or should they want longer, it requires a resolution of the jury vote of cancel. So rather than stopping someone mid-sentence to get a motion on the floor, the head of council can just make that decision if it's needed at that time. And we did not stipulate a time limit for presentations. So as we've seen many times, when we have a consultant or presenting, they can be quite lengthy. So we didn't want to put a timeline on those types of presentations. Article sixteen, we consolidated some sections, related devotions into one spot, and we added language for friendly moments. Article seventeen, rules of debate. So currently, the bylaw states that a member of council can speak to an event up to two times for a maximum of three minutes without speaking. And that was extended to five minutes. And again, the council can extend as should they need to, but rather than stopping someone in the middle of a conversation to get a motion on the floor and just allow for a nicer flow of session and debate. So that's why that was put in there.
I like that.
And forgive me, and then article twenty, conduct. So for those who don't live in our world, this might be an intimidating environment to, to enter and know how the, how to address council, the rules of quorum, just transparency around public participation. So that was added in there for some language so people know how we do things here. So overall, the updates were intended to ensure our compliance, uh, and your readability and just so I know our current practices. And I'm, I'm happy to take any questions, incorporate any changes you want to see. But once we have a version that we're all happy with, we'll put forward a memo with some intention to adopt in the bylaw. And then looking for council's adoption of the next regular meeting. So I'll leave that with you and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Melanie. Any questions from anybody from Melanie? Good?
I just.
Oh, yes.
Um, yes, thank you very much. Very clear, very concise. Um, the policy reads well. Um, the, the draft policy and, and I think those, uh, those updates were, were well overdue on, on some of them. And I think this is is something that a package, you know, if we're in a meeting and, oh gee, what happens here? It's quick, it's easy, we can look it up. Um, and so, no, thank you overdue and thank you for getting this done. Appreciate it.
Any other?
I'll just.
Kudos.
Yeah, that's pretty clear. Yes, I think it's an excellent document and well, at all times.
Okay. I'll, I'll, okay. Did you have a comment?
No, no.
Um, I'll read the recommended motion that the council of the township of Ashtead Norwood receives this report for information and further that the council directs staff to advertise this the intention to adopt and update procedure bylaw at the next regular meeting of council scheduled for September tenth, twenty twenty-four. And further that the council directs staff to include the draft procedural bylaw as presented with the notice of intention. Uh, mover, Counselor Hodges, secondary. Counselor War, all in favor, motion is carried. Uh, before we continue on with you, Alan, in five minutes' time, four minutes' time, we move into another session. So we'll just take a recess right now. Uh, motion for that, Deputy Mayor Bird, seconded by Counselor Hodges. And I all in favor. Thank you. Uh, thank you, counsel. We'll now reconvene into the committee of adjustment for the corporation of the township. I need a motion for that. Sorry, Deputy Mayor Bird and Counselor War. All in favor, motion is carried. The committee of adjustment corporation of the township of Ashtead Norwood will hold a public meeting under section forty-five, the planning act, R S O nineteen ninety on August twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four, two P M. To consider the application seeking relief from the comprehensive zoning bylaw for the township of Ashtead Norwood being bylaw two thousand nine dash zero eight as amended. Any person may attend the statutory, or statutory public hearing to express their views about the application and/or have, um, council, council represent them for the purpose. If a person wishes to make written comment, they may forward their statement to the committee secretary treasurer. Um, so I'll welcome everybody here right now and the time is two oh one. And the committee adjustment has entered into a public hearing to consider minor variance number A dash zero one dash twenty twenty-four. Uh, to begin with, I'll ask the committee members, is there any pecuniary interests? Saying none. Um, thank you. I'll now hand, hand it over to Ed Whitwell. Pardon me?
Provoke the agenda.
All sort. Who hold the agenda for this meeting? Can I have a motion? Counselor Hodges, seconded by Deputy Mayor Bird. All in favor, motion is carried. I will now turn the floor over. Go ahead, Ed War.
Thank you. This, uh, notice of complete application and notice of public hearing for the minor variance was provided in accordance with the planning act to all applicable agencies and property owners within a hundred and twenty meters of the subject site. We only are required to, uh, circulate within sixty meters of the subject site, but we always do it the same as our zoning bylaw amendments to a hundred and twenty meters of the subject site. The application, the complete application and notice of public hearing was posted on the township of Ashtead Norwood's website for the general public and also posted right on the subject site itself. I'll read the, uh, two, uh, appealed notes that I have to read. If a specified person does not make oral submission at a public hearing or make written submission to the committee before the decision is final and binding, the person is not entitled to appeal the committee's decision to the Ontario Land Tribunal. If a specified person does not make oral submissions at the public hearing or make written submissions to the committee before the decision is final and binding, the person may not be added as a party to the hearing of an appeal for the Ontario Land Tribunal unless it is in the opinion of the tribunal, there are reasonable grounds to do so. A copy of the decision of the committee will be sent to the applicant and to each person who participated in the public hearing and who filed with this committee secretary treasurer a written request for notice of this decision. So the only, uh, difference in that, uh, appeal statements is that it's, uh, now worded as a specified person compared to if a person does not make oral submissions. The specified person just means that there are no appeals from neighboring property owners permitted anymore. Specified person would be a public body like the county roads department or the township or the landowner themselves that have, have applied for the minor variance. They may appeal. But other than that, uh, it's only agencies and the landowner and the township that may appeal decisions. And that goes for zoning as well. Uh, so I'll go right to my report. The subject lands are situated in the rural area of the municipality and they're known as forty-six eighty-six County Road Two. The purpose and effect of the minor variance, if approved, would allow the construction of a detached garage. Mister Krabby submitted the application for committee of adjustment to increase the required maximum height of the accessory structure of four point five meters from section three point one D of the township of Ashtead Norwood's zoning bylaw two thousand nine dash zero eight as amended. And they wanted to increase it from four point five meters to the five point nine six meters. Township staff are satisfied that the four tests required in approving a minor variance application are met. Those four requirements are be minor in nature, be desirable and appropriate development or use of the land, building or structure in the area. This is a very large rural residential lot and this is located at the very far, uh, distance away from the, uh, county roads. This, uh, application maintains the general intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw. And so if you take this entire book and you have one sentence that it doesn't comply with, to me, the general intent is maintained. That it just doesn't comply with one sentence compared to all that text. And same with the general intent and purpose of the official plan. No comments, uh, were received at time of writing the report. But since then, we have a handwritten note from the neighbor on the north, uh, saying that he supports this application. And we've received also comments from, uh, autonomy region conservation authority that they do not have any concerns. And they're, in their opinion, that the application is consistent with the provincial policy statement referencing natural hazards. Uh, does not appear to create any new or aggravated, uh, existing hazards. And no permits are required from, uh, the autonomy conservation authority. And the subject property is not located within the source water protection area. So there, they have no concerns. Um, the, uh, the notice is attached in the report, a little site plan is attached in the report that shows the setbacks off County Road forty, or County Road Two is, uh, about four hundred and seventy-five feet. And the setbacks off County Road thirty-eight is about a hundred and eighty-five feet plus or minus. So it shows that it's located way over and way in the background, that it shouldn't be a concern whatsoever. The application is, uh, attached. And if there's anything else or any questions, the, uh, the building permit plans are attached. Uh, just so you can get a feel for what the building actually would look like. And, uh, that's it. If you have any questions, I would be very happy to answer them.
Any questions of our chief building official? None? I'll read the recommended motion then, that the committee of adjustment for the township of Ashtead Norwood accepts this report regarding, regarding minor variance application A dash zero one dash twenty twenty-four Krabby for information and further that the committee of adjustment of the township of Ashtead Norwood approves the minor variance application A dash zero one dash twenty twenty-four Krabby as submitted. I have a mover. Moved by Counselor War, seconded by Counselor Hodges. All in favor, that motion is carried. Yeah.
He signed it, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ed. I'll now ask for a motion to adjourn the public meeting of August twenty-seven at two ten and further that the regular meeting of council be resumed. Uh, Counselor Hodges reads, uh, Counselor War, all in favor, motion is carried. Moving on to R ten, on our final report, the management action list, C A O Alan.
So through you, Mayor. Um, I think we all know, we only had one meeting in July and one meeting in August. But if you look at what we've got done over in July and August meetings, I think we got a fair bit done. Uh, a reminder for the September tenth meeting that that will be meeting starts at eleven o'clock. And I believe the, sorry, eleven thirty, I bet they do. And I think we're also gonna have a motion later for the twenty-fourth one to move that one to Westwood. So I had mentioned previously that with the public works management position being absent, we didn't necessarily have a lot of reports for them in the first part of the year. I think you'll see starting today and moving into the fall that they will be kind of playing a little catch up there. So in the next couple of weeks, we'll, we'll see more from them than we normally would. Hopefully by the time we get to the October meeting, that will even sub off a little bit and we'll get back in a more regular routine. Uh, are there any questions that we have coming up that I can help anybody with?
Anyone? I have sorry, Paul, I'm going to move myself, Counselor War.
Thank you through you, Mayor. Uh, just, just one thing, if you might be able to add the general business. I see the grants committee, uh, you know, we have something coming up on the twenty-sixth, but I did see the weekly update and I was wondering if we could, um, perhaps move that discussion about the seniors active living center program, the, the grant, the application to general business to do, um, to talk about that at that time, if that's okay?
Well, I, I'd be an excellent idea, Counselor.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Uh, the motion is that council accepts this report with the revisions suggested by staff and members of council. Counselor War and Deputy Mayor Bird, all in favor, motion is carried. Correspondents, moving on to correspondence for action. What's council's wishes with respect to C five municipality tweet O P P force, Deputy Mayor Bird?
Um, I would make a motion to support.
Okay, motion to support the comment and, seconder? Uh, Counselor War.
Uh, yeah, thank you through you, Mayor. Um, I'm, I'm not confident that this would go anywhere, but looking back at it. Yeah, thank you through you mayor. I'm I'm not confident that this would go anywhere, but looking back at our budget and. You know, we're over six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, no P P plus the ride program plus the board. And I think any, any, any help that we could get, our small municipalities would be great again. I would love my grant for it, but I would like to support this.
Okay, any other comments? All in favor? Motion's carried. Township of Larder Lake. Council's wishes with this, C six. Access asset. Asset retirement obligations. Deputy Mayor, Deputy Mayor Burton.
Motion to support again. I'll sign that.
Okay, second by councillor War, comment?
Through you mayor. Yeah, I re- I wasn't a hundred percent aware of what this was about. It's funny, I I did reject our treasurer and. He said that these retirement obligations take a lot of work. And often inside agencies to do them and he said any support financially or from other. Organizations would be helpful. So he he thought that this was was important to support. So. I like I say, didn't know a lot about it, so.
All right, any other comments? All in favor? Our motion's carried. Moving on to C seven, town of Bradford West, Wilbury. Ontario long service metals.
Um, service, service, save this for more.
Received. Second by councillor Hodge Greaves. All in favor? Motion's carried. Township of the town of South Monaghan, regulations for the importation of safe use of lithium batteries.
I would support.
Motion to support. Councillor War, secondaire. Deputy Mayor, our councillor Hodge Greaves. Any comments? All in favor? Motion's carried. Town of Wyoming. Not even gonna try. Under service cellular communication services and rural private centers. Councillors.
Sorry, I I'm saying to support this. Yeah, it's an ongoing issue and you know, even small towns are being serviced now, they could miss that rural Ontario. Those people in on farms where they might not have phone connections, you're still being left behind.
Okay, secondaire of that, Deputy Mayor Burton, all in favor? Should is carried. Town of Essex. Bill one seventy three, intimate partner violence epidemic act twenty twenty four.
Um, motion to receive again.
Deputy Mayor, motion to receive with comment and councillor War.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to make counsel aware that this has already been done at county. Um, K sat became to do a presentation on this early in the year, he wanted you to probably. And so it has been done in in the county and the city as well. And I know they're going out from there, so. She vibes about it to receive. We have, we have dealt with this already.
Any other comments? All in favor? Motion's carried. Moving on to council lays on reports. Does anyone have anything they'd like to bring forward? Councillor War.
Uh, yes, just a couple of things. We have an upcoming VAC meeting on Thursday. Uh, September fifth at two P M at the Norweg town hall. That will be our first one after our summer break. So I think there'll be some new initiatives coming forward from that. And we did meet on the. Uh, ANDCHC, we met on the twenty second. Uh, in at the heritage center in Westwood and there'll be a further report coming forward later, but it was all about our cemetery walk. And who are speakers are going to be headstone speakers. We have, I think we're at seventy tickets that people have taught. That confirmed, but we do have room for a hundred and twenty, so we do have tickets available. They're free. And if everybody can support us on September twenty first, the cemetery walk is from one to three. We all start at the same time. It it should be a nice, a nice way to respect and look at the cemetery in a different light. That's all I have, thank you.
Uh, Deputy Mayor.
Uh, thank you through you mayor. Just a few things from the our last county meeting and I apologize to our clerk, I didn't get the writing. But I wanted to let you know that there will be a new county economic development tourism office. Um, and that will be in Lakefield at the old post office and it will be a shared building with some some township staff. And I think that will be a great addition as we move forward with our economic development in the county. So that will be coming forward. I think they take the space over the first part of September, so that's coming up.
And it's all accessible.
Yeah, very, so it's beautiful, beautiful building. That looks great. There was a ward of a proposal for the watershed plan that went to major solutions in the county, so that will be moving forward. And Carrie Snotty, the manager of waste management. Presented the the garbage upload and organic study to council, to county. And there's still five townships in it. And so there'll be more information coming, you know, back to us on that. And there it'll be interesting to see where that lands. It's it's quite a, quite a mixed bag, but. Anyway, that report was given and it will be coming back. And that's everything, thank you.
Moving ahead. We could talk about AMO right now, Alan, now I'll let you start.
Through you mayor. So the mayor and I attended the annual conference from the eighteen to the twenty first. We had three delegations, one with the ministry of infrastructure, one with the ministry of health and one with the Ontario Medical Association. Uh, I think generally they were received well, if you remember with these meetings, you never know, you never get answers at the meeting, you just kind of. They take their information, you plant some seeds and hopefully something grows from there. And I think we achieved that when we did that. Uh, I think on both sides, from the province side, the one theme or two themes that we see here played a bit was. Build homes, build homes, build homes, which I wasn't surprised to hear that. The other theme we heard consistently was. We wanna work with you, we wanna work with you, we wanna work with you. On the municipal side, we've heard the same thing back, we wanna work with you too, we need more funding. So I'm not so sure the province got the last part of that messaging, but it just got to be very clear that from. The mayor could comment on this as well, that that was pretty much what every municipality was saying, if you want us to do more, if you want us to work with you, we need you to be at table. I like to hope the province heard that message, but I guess we'll see over the next six, twelve, eighteen months whether they did or not. Um, we saw some good presentations, we heard some good speakers, the premier spoke, a lot of ministers spoke. Uh, the official opposition spoke, the Liberal Party spoke, the Green Party spoke, so it it was a wide variety of things. I think at the end of the day, everybody wants good things for Ontario, but it's how you're gonna make them happen, so. I do think it was a productive meeting, I think it was good that we attended. It was a, they were a long three days, I think both the mayor and I said from the third or fourth day, we were both surprised how tired we were. Considering we were just listening most of the time, but yeah, I think they were a good experience. I I think that's pretty, anybody has any questions, I'm happy to turn her off that.
I think AMO or the Ontario Medical Association was very good when we went there. Uh, they like our setup, what we've done here with the medical building. Um, they're gonna push that on further with Minister of Health and that. Minister of Health, and we were asking, of course, everybody asks for money. Like Alan said, we'll see how that dwittles down when the funnel actually gets to us. I had another delegation too that I did with the county and that was long term care. Uh, we were there trying to get support for. An okay to open another hundred and twenty eight beds at Fairhaven, which is. Needed badly, like there's twelve hundred on the waiting list, it's a lot like a lot of other long term care homes. With the presentation there, it was a little different because they had more things they could spin off of. Uh, one thing was indigenous, they'd like to do one floor with that, of course, the minister comes back, we don't wanna see any empty beds. No, the beds will be filled and if somebody does come in, somebody will be moved over to the other sector. That's all. It was, like I say, it was a whole three days, I can tell you that.
Five hundred, I believe, is that what it meant, twenty five hundred?
Twenty five hundred, through you mayor, twenty five hundred delegates.
Delegates.
But thirty three, the trade show centers, I heard, and then the pollution throughout four.
Like it was a lot. And of course, I left my mayor cards one day, but I made sure to take them the next and put them in everything. Please give our township a call. Councillor War.
I I did see the report from AMO about releasing a lot of funding to the bigger cities for opioid. Opioid and homelessness. And I was just wondering, what would we be looking at? Is it going to come down to like lower tiers as well, where, you know, we have small towns, small towns still have the same. Same problems and you know, what are the solutions? So I was just wondering if there was any talk, because they were giving a lot of money out of, was it four hundred and eighty million? Something like that?
It's hard to say, it's going, that's right, I can tell you, when you go to AMO. A lot of times the bigger players, the Torontos, the Hamptons, the Mississaugas, they do tend to suck up the oxygen in the room, I'm sorry, they do. So I would hope that some of that money will eventually work its way down to us. I did not hear anything specifically. That makes me say it's gonna happen in six months or anything like that. Hopefully there will be some flow through, but. That was another one of the themes, the homelessness, the. I get the we, we're not exempt from it, but we're also having been in a lot of for the week. Yeah, I I know it's more homeless than what I had ever seen any time I've ever been there before, so clearly it is an issue for.
Any further questions? No? All right, moving along to. You, anything now? Okay, moving along, general business, does anybody have anything they'd like to discuss?
Um, and you through you mayor, I have a couple of things, unfortunately, sorry about that. I'm gonna start off with, I was fortunate to be able to attend. Uh, the Lang Agricultural Heritage Celebration on August twenty fifth. And there was three farm families that were, you know, celebrated and on now on the A Hall of. Wall Hall of Fame at the Lang Building, Joseph Crowley, Carolyn Dean Warner and Daryl Drain. And I was just wondering if we might be able to send a congratulations. Um, the letters to them from the township on behalf of the township. I I don't know if that's possible, we need a resolution or we can just leave it up to. Uh, the clerk's department if that's possible.
Do we need a resolution? We, we will make sure that it goes.
Thank you very much. The second one was what we were talking about in the C O's report. And one of those was about the Westwood meeting and it's also the twenty twenty three business and community awards. Um, I was just wondering about finalizing the detail, if we request formal resolution from from everyone here. Uh, that we amend the time for September twenty fourth to one thirty and that the location of our council meeting. Uh, is at the Westwood Library. So I think we have to get, I would make that motion.
Okay, secondaire, Deputy Mayor Burton. Any questions? All? Motion's carried.
And sorry, and the second part from the CEO's, the list was about the grants committee. And there was a, I guess, a weekly update about the senior active living center program grant that there, the applications are taking part. And I was wondering if we could pass a resolution supporting endorsing the staff's application for the grant funding. Um, and the partnership with the library for the seniors active living center program. Uh, and if we could do that, I'll make that resolution if that's possible. Do you need more word, has that affected?
Still moved by councillor War to support. Secondaire, Deputy Mayor Burton, all in favor? Motion's carried. One thirty. All ready? Moving along, we have a closed session. And we're going to go into closed session to discuss and evaluate the C O's performance for the first six months in accordance with section two thirty nine dash two. Section B of the municipal act and the time is two twenty eight. Can I have a motion please? Councillor Hodge Greaves, second by Deputy Mayor Burton, all in favor? Motion's carried. We're now reconvening and it's two forty four. Thanks for coming back, Alan. We have no notice of motions today, so we'll move into the bylaws and I'll ask to read these. The time, I'm not sure if I mentioned it before, is two forty five, I'm gonna reconvene.
Thank you, Mayor, through you. That the bylaw to override entering into a merger agreement between Douglas James Egerton and Kelly Marie McLaughlin. And Kevin Raymond English and Julie Anne English and the corporation of the township of Ascot North would be read a first, second and third time in number twenty twenty four dash forty one.
Moved by councillor Hodge Greaves and councillor War, all in favor? Motion is carried.
And referring by law, that the bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the regular meeting of the council of the county of Ascot North would be held at date August twenty seven, twenty twenty four. Be read a first, second or third time in number twenty twenty four dash forty two.
Uh, moved by Deputy Mayor Burton, second by councillor War, all in favor? Motion's carried. Future meeting schedule, councillors? Schedule meeting for you that now concludes our business for the day, unless somebody has a question on the future meetings.
Just for clarification on here.
Yes.
September tenth, eleven thirty A M start, change and September twenty fourth, it is in Westwood and the start time is one thirty, correct? Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, may I get a motion of adjournment from our meeting and the time is two forty six. And our next regular meeting will be held September tenth at eleven thirty. Uh, moved by councillor War, second by Deputy Mayor Burton, all in favor? Motion's carried.